All right, seeing as we have a quorum, I will call to order this regular session of the Bloomington Common Council for Wednesday, August 21st, 2024. Will the deputy clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Here.
Zulek? Rallo?
Here.
Ruff?
Here.
Pete Monssmith?
Here.
Stasburg?
Here.
Asari? Rosenberg? And Daly?
Here.
Thank you. So I will move on to our land and labor acknowledgement. We recognize that the city of Bloomington sits on native land. The city, as well as city administrative buildings, are on the traditional homelands of the Miami, Delaware, Potawatomi, and Shawnee people, and we acknowledge they are past, present, and future caretakers of this land. We also acknowledge that much of the economic progress and development in Indiana and specifically Bloomington resulted from the unpaid labor and forced servitude of people of color, specifically enslaved African labor. We acknowledge that this land remains home to and a site of gathering and healing for many indigenous and other people of color, and we commit to the work necessary to create and promote a more equitable and just Bloomington. We move forward knowing and acknowledging our rich, complicated, and sometimes painful past so that we can learn from it and create a true land of opportunity. On today's agenda, we will have approval of minutes. We have three sets of minutes to review. Then we will have reports from council members, and that should include review of a letter in support of the Economic Development Designation on the federal level. Then we will have, I don't think we have reports from the mayor and city offices tonight. We move on to reports from council committees, and then the first period of open public comment on items that are not on the agenda. We will then move to appointments to boards and commissions. We have no legislation for first reading, so we would move on to legislation for second reading and resolutions, and in that category, we have Resolution 2024-16 approving the issuance of refunding bonds of the City of Bloomington Redevelopment District. We will then have our second period of public comment for items not on the agenda. We will review a few items of council schedule and then adjourn. So first to the minutes.
Sorry, let me get back to that page. I move to approve the minutes from April 17th, May 1st, and May 8th, 2024. As amended, there was slight changes in grammar sent out prior to this meeting.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to approve those three sets of minutes. Any discussion or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. We thank the clerk's office for those minutes, and they are approved. Next, we will move on to reports from council members, and I'll start on my right. Councilmember Flaherty, do you have a report this evening?
Do not, thank you.
Councilmember Rallo?
No, I don't, thank you.
Councilmember Ruff?
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay, I'm going to take up a little time to allow Councilmember Asari to get settled, and I will give my report. So I had just a few things to report. I did have a constituent meeting on August 10th. That's my monthly meeting on the second Saturday of each month at 11:00 a.m. via Zoom, and we discussed the housing action plan that had just been released by Heading Home. We also talked about the then upcoming council session where there would be deliberation and group discussions about homelessness and what the city council could do about it. We discussed composting and historic preservation districts as well. I wanted to also announce here something many of you already know, but for the benefit of the public, the Capital Improvement Board for the Convention Center is having a public meeting on September 16th from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. to provide an update to the community on the expansion plans for the Convention Center. So, and that will be held appropriately at the Convention Center. So I encourage everybody to attend and see some draft plans and provide input. Councilmember Stasburg, do you have a report tonight?
I do have just a short report about Plan Commission because the Plan Commission meeting was last week. We did, we had three petitions. The first one was that the second hearing of the petition I mentioned last month over on Post Road in the Grandview neighborhood, they were splitting a rather large lot there, and we did approve that large lot split to make a kind of regular lot like the other lots in the neighborhood with a house on it, and the other one does not currently have any building on it at all, and there are no current plans submitted to change that. The second petition was another subdivision petition actually that is being proposed off of Kinzer Road, kind of Kinzer and Acuff, I think, kind of a corner lot there which is currently a field, and it is on the north side, and that petition was forwarded to its required second reading. It's kind of an interesting one, and there's a lot of documentation in the Plan Commission packet if anybody's interested in reading that. And then the third item of business is actually the one that council is going to see. There were more changes made to Title 20 in response to the state-level changes having to do with steep slopes and permitting and just making sure that things are only in the Udo in like one place instead of multiple places, and it's just kind of cleaning up some small things like that. So that is my report, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Asari.
Thank you so much, and I'm sorry for being late, everyone. I like to make dramatic entrances, but as you all would have seen in the packet, I provided a memo and a draft letter that I'm hoping to get you all to vote to approve so we can all sign it, just showing our support of this proposal to start the processes of working towards an Economic Development District together with Brown County and Owen County. I think I laid out fairly extensively within sort of the memo, the both the sort of reasoning behind this, the stage at which it is right now in the proposal, and sort of what our role is at this time, as well as some sort of initial thoughts and concerns that I both raised during the meeting at the BDC Executive Committee a couple of weeks ago, and then, but also I think how a lot of that is addressed. So whereas I am asking that we all support this initiative, I am not saying that we need necessarily to support the end designation. I think that it's the right step at this time, as I reasoned out there and happy to answer any questions, as I reasoned out in the document, I think that it is the right sort of first step for us to take to sort of help answer some of the questions and concerns that might exist, but it could, if managed correctly, be, I think, a really, really great opportunity for regional economic development. So I know also that Jen Pearl is here, and I don't know if you wanted to say a few things or if we'll have the chance to, I don't know, as the president may desire or not, but anyways, happy to answer any questions if they're relevant. Otherwise, I think we have a motion in the draft thing.
Shall we go ahead and get a motion on the table, and then we can take questions?
Oh yeah, good. I forget what the motion is. Somebody have it? I move that the council authorize distribution of a letter to the U.S. Economic Development Administration in support of creating a comprehensive economic development strategy and economic development district designation within the state.
Is there a second? Thank you. So are there questions for Councilmember Asari or possibly for Ms. Pearl? Yes, Councilmember Stasburg?
I do have a question. So in your potential concerns list, you mentioned administrative burden and resource constraints, and then farther down in the important note, you mentioned cost sharing essentially between the counties. So how does that work? I guess I'm a little bit uncertain about the whole process because it sounds like it's almost like two stages where we do a study, and then based on the study decide whether or not to do it. So when is the fiscal impact, I guess? Like, is it for the study or is it after? And then if that cost is for Monroe County, how is that? I mean, what is the cost to just Bloomington, and do we need some kind of interlocal agreement between the county and the city? And I have questions about that.
Yeah, all good questions, and Jen, feel free to join in if you'd like as well, but just surface level, the SEDS plan can be funded up to, I think it's $50,000 or something like that within this application. We think, sort of just thinking about other similar external consultations, that this will cost somewhere closer to $100,000, and so that would then be shared equally amongst the three. I think the question between the Monroe County and Bloomington, I think that's something, you're right, I mean, that we probably need to figure out, but that's an estimate, so we don't actually even know what that cost could be. I was just saying in the sort of higher range, it's probably 50,000, so I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, Jen.
So I think for the latter question, it is a two-phase.
Introduce yourself.
I'm so sorry. My name is Jen Pearl, and I'm the president of the Bloomington Economic Development Corporation. We're a nonprofit. We serve all of Monroe County in advancing economic vitality. So it is a multi-step process. I should note, there's actually just seven counties in the state of Indiana that are not part of an Economic Development District. We are one of them, and when you're part of an EDD, and it's outlined in the packet, you have resources available to you. If you become an EDD, you have an organization and essentially a structure that can go after federal funding through the USDA and other sources. The one that's closest to us is SIDC, just south of here, and they were incredibly instrumental over the last couple of decades in the redevelopment of the area, actually around Westgate, around Crane. So they can be really powerful in terms of bringing people together around a strategy for what they would like to see happen in a community, but that's a very consultative process. So you go through the SEDS, which is the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy is the first stage, to see what would a common strategy look like across these counties? What are some of the common goals? What are the things we want to work on together? And then, once you go through that process, you can apply for an EDD designation. The costs that you mentioned, those were based on consultant costs that we had worked with in the past on previous projects, but we would be looking for public and private sources of funding, so it would not just be from government. I should also mention Elletsville would be at the table as well, in addition to, you know, public and private partners.
Can I follow up on that? So when exactly would that fiscal impact happen in terms of like where we are now?
So the next steps, if I'm remembering this correctly, so we're providing letters of support, then we get support from the state of Indiana, and then apply to the EDA for funds, which Councilmember Asari had mentioned, which would then be matched. So honestly, in the coming months or the new year is when those steps would be happening.
Or did you have something to add? No, other questions? Councilmember Ruff?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I understand exactly what this stage, this step, what we are sort of endorsing or getting behind exactly.
This would be saying, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
So this would be saying that we're supporting for kicking off this process of exploring, applying, you know, for funds to do a SEDS and to move that forward. And then I think in the memo, it outlines, you know, it's an iterative process, so each step along the way, it's okay, we've made this step in the process, now are we deciding to move together in this process as well? The other piece of it is, you know, our community is a hub on the Innovation Corridor that runs from Indy to Crane, but then also the corridor that runs across Brown County all the way to Owen County. We have the movement of workers and employers that are working across the region, and so as we were looking at the opportunities that we hadn't been really grasping, because we're not in an EDD district, because we can be working more collaboratively with others, it was something we wanted to go after.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask another question?
Yes.
So are Lawrence and Green in other, already in existing district of some other?
That is correct, and unfortunately, they can't double dip in multiple districts. We would still be collaborating with them, you know, across organizations and such, but they are in other existing districts.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions about this letter of support? Councilmember Rallo?
So the letter mentions growth a number of times, and I'll have a comment about that in a bit, but how will we measure success? In other words, what is the economic endgame in this? What is the economic benefit?
Absolutely. So there is, through the SEDS process, and if anybody wants to nerd out on this, the U.S. Economic Development and Administration has a SEDS page. So if you just Google "EDA SEDS," CEDS, it shows all the different components in it. And so there's a SWOT analysis. You actually set out metrics as a community together for what you would like to achieve together. So that actually would be defined collectively together through the SEDS process.
Thank you so much for asking that question, because I think, you know, very similarly to, and I mentioned a lot of this during the meeting at the BDC, but then I've tried to lay this out extensively here, but I don't think there's panaceas here, right? I mean, I think the goal is for us to start a process of being able to answer some of those questions collectively, and, you know, to be at the table to have serious input in shaping what that looks like. So, I mean, to me, the SEDS process in and of itself is, I think, just for the sake of being able to start to ask those type of questions, I think is going to be a really useful process to participate in.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
Other questions from council members? Okay. This is an unusual item for council member reports, but in the interest of transparency and public engagement, I would offer a moment for public comment on this item. If there's anybody in the public who wishes to comment on the proposed letter of support by the city council to the Economic Development Administration for the creation of a comprehensive economic development strategy with Brown and Owen Counties, you can come to the podium, or if you are joining us on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function in Zoom if you'd like to give a comment. I don't see anybody in council chambers. Attorney Kulak, is there anybody on Zoom?
No immediate takers.
All right. Well, then we'll come back to council members. Are there any comments before we vote on the motion? Councilmember Rallo?
Yes, I appreciate the effort here, and I'm glad that we'll have further discussion on it. I tend to recoil when I see economic goals termed in terms of growth without discerning exactly what that means. There's a number of reasons for that. Not everyone gains from growth is one, so I look through the letter, and there's nothing about equity in it. So that needs to be considered. Public bads can add to growth. If money exchanges hands, we count it as GDP, so it adds to growth. And then there's the sort of the sustainable aspect of this, and that is that in the aggregate, growth is defined as an increase in the materials and energy throughput through the economy, and that has to end at some point. So we can't have infinite growth on a finite planet. So we need to think about the term growth and think about maybe substituting qualitative measurements instead of just quantitative. We need to think about the equity consideration. I'll give you an example of how growth is erasing the gains that we're making in terms of climate. So we've been expanding alternative energy generation, but that's been eclipsed by growth. So the growth of the economy has more than eclipsed the gains that have been made in terms of cutting carbon. So clearly, we can't continue in this way without really coming to terms with this, and a lot of it has to do with fair distribution in society. The letter mentions things that you would think might be benign in terms of economic development or growth, for instance, IT, but these data centers, which we debated earlier in the year, and the one up in Boone County as an example, use tremendous amounts of energy, tremendous amounts of water, and in the aggregate in the U.S., these data centers are using about 5% of the total electrical power generation of the country, and that's set to double by 2030. So that means, you know, more coal burning or more nuclear or some means of generating electricity. So I just mention these things because I think that they need consideration as we go forward. Of course, I am absolutely for full employment, well-paying jobs, raising the wage floor, making sure that we have needs met in our community and so forth. So those things are all important, but I think that we need to really think about this and unpack that term as we move forward. Thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? Councilmember Ruff?
I just want to note that I share, Councilmember, all those concerns, and that we really need to define what we mean instead of using economic growth and economic development so interchangeably, because growth by itself can absolutely, can be the opposite of development if it's, you know, if wages, if costs go up due to, you know, due to land values or whatever, cost of living goes up in a place, but wages aren't really keeping up with that. So, but supporting at this stage seems to be the opportunity to have that kind of input and have that discussion. So I'm happy to do that. Also, I want to mention, you know, our comprehensive plan does mention very specifically what we, that we don't consider simply an increase in size of our economy as being, as defining that as economic development. But it's interesting to think, you know, the other, it might be very different in the other counties, you know, maybe Spencer, maybe Owen County, they may have some different goals and needs, and that this could be an opportunity to, I think, better distribute through our region rather than continue to concentrate in Bloomington, for example. It's a place where we can have these discussions for, and maybe have a more healthy, better distribution of benefits and wealth and amenities and well-being through the region. So I'm happy to support it with that understanding of what this stage is, an opportunity for us to do in collaboration with our neighboring area and the help of the state, the help of the BDC, and all the other folks that'll be involved. So, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Stasburg?
Thank you. I'll just very quickly kind of say out loud one of the things in your information that you gave us was that just because we support this first stage of pursuing the SEDS evaluation doesn't mean necessarily continuing to support the entire designation, and I think that some of the things brought up are interesting in the ideas of how, like, in some ways different these three counties are. It'll be really interesting to know from that report, like, how much our economic development goals overlap and what kind of shared common goals we have. So I'm supportive of figuring that out, but I also wanted to say out loud that just because we're looking at what those things might be, doesn't necessarily mean that a next stage makes sense.
All right, any other comments? I think we'll do a roll call vote, just to be clear. Deputy Clerk Crossley?
Councilmember Flaherty?
Yes.
Rallo?
Yes.
Ruff?
Yes.
Pete Monssmith?
Yes.
Stasburg?
Yes.
Asari?
Yes.
And Councilmember Daly?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes with a vote of seven to zero, and I will sign the letter on behalf of the council, and we will forward it to the EDA. Thank you, Ms. Pearl.
The comments from Councilmembers Rallo and Ruff especially, I think you'll find actually, we have a great deal of alignment in how we see opportunities for our future, so I look forward to more conversations. Thank you.
All right, we will move back from that detour to the last council member who might have a council member report, Councilmember Daly.
Thank you for remembering to come back to me, I appreciate that. Just very briefly, I just wanted to acknowledge I had verbally stated I was going to be having a constituent meeting tomorrow night at Monroe County Public Library. I am terrible at paying attention sometimes, and I double booked. I didn't realize that was the same night as my youngest son's open house at his elementary school, and I think I have to be there, otherwise my fourth grader would never forgive me. So I will be rescheduling tomorrow night's constituent meeting with my deepest apologies. I don't have a date yet, but I will let you know as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we will move on to, I don't think we have any reports from the mayor and city offices, so we will move on to reports from council committees. Are there any reports from council committees? Councilmember Stasburg?
Hi, thank you. I have another hiring committee report to give you guys. We have met twice since my last report a few weeks ago. One of those meetings was an executive session, and that was before Councilmember Rosenberg was officially appointed, and during that meeting, we discussed the applicant pool that we had at this time, and then following that meeting, the following week after, Councilmember Rosenberg was appointed to join our committee, we did have a second public session and talking about our plan to proceed forward, and we kind of realized that we just have some scheduling challenges in general, especially with Budget Week happening, and so our conclusion after that meeting was that Councilmember Rosenberg and I performed three phone interviews, which actually happened to all be today, and as a hiring committee, our next meetings are Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, August 27th, and so we'll have an executive session at 1:00 for the purpose of the committee discussing those interviews that Councilmember Rosenberg and I had, and then, starting at 1:45, we will have a public session to kind of determine publicly our next step and whether our current pool of applicants is robust enough to continue or if we think it's best to repost the position. And if the position ends up reposted, there probably will be tweaks made to that posting. So if anybody has any questions, please let me or another member of the hiring committee know. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have a report from the Special Committee on Council Processes. We had a meeting last Thursday, August 15th. We reviewed language in the Bloomington Municipal Code Title II in regard to various boards and commissions. Specifically, we looked at their purpose statements and their powers and duties, as well as to check whether they had an annual reporting requirement in code, and we got through several of them, so it was kind of a working meeting for part of it. We are going to finish that work at our September meeting. Then we also discussed our work plan for the remainder of the year. We will have one meeting in each of the remaining months after August, so in September, we hope to finish drafting revisions to Title II in regard to purpose and powers and duties of some boards and commissions, the non-statutory ones, that we will also run by the commissions themselves and then bring to council, and of course, also work with the administration if they see any issues. It's largely a matter of updating and clarifying some of the roles and duties. It's largely a matter of updating and clarifying some of the roles and duties, and in some cases, just using the same language consistently. Then in October, we're planning to discuss code of conduct for board and commission members. In November, we plan to discuss revisions to, additional possible revisions to format and processes of regular council sessions. And in December, we plan to talk about incorporating equity into council processes. So still have a lot of work to do. And are there any other reports from council committees? All right, in that case, we can move on to our first section of public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. This section is limited to a maximum of 20 minutes, and each speaker will have up to three minutes. Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to give a comment? And if you are joining us on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function in Zoom, and if that's not working for some reason, or if you prefer, you can also leave a chat message for the meeting host. So let's start here in chambers. Please give your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. I think there should be a sign-up sheet there, too.
Hi, my name's Greg Alexander. So I hurt my knee, wrecked my bike. Sometimes I can point to a reason, you know, infrastructure, or traffic, or this was just me being stupid. I slipped on a little sand in the rain. I know how to ride in rain, sand, no trouble for me. A bit of loose gravel coming up, no trouble for me either. The problem is, I was turning into an alley, and I know there's loose gravel in the alley, and it is so much fun to hit that, hit that, you're turning really hard into the alley, and you slide on that loose gravel every time. It's a thrill, it never gets old. So I was riding as hot as possible, and so I could slide into this alley. I was acting the fool on my racing bike, because it's fun. The IU students are back. Like many people over 40, I spent an hour this weekend with my friends, sharing stories, you know, about the dumb kids. No one says it out loud, but we're all thinking the same thing, right? If we could be dumb like the kids, or old like us, I think it's an easy choice, you know? There's a little jealousy going on. So I'm thinking about how I banged up my knee, and I'm patting myself on the back, because I succeeded at being dumb like a kid, right? I'm 44 years old, you know, this hurts, I'm still limping a little bit. I can't be falling just for the thrill of it. I need to learn this lesson, but I don't really want to. I'm dissatisfied watching myself grow old. I mean, why do I even have a racing bike, right? Why am I still sliding on purpose? Speaking of kids, my oldest is going to be a freshman at North High School in two years, in 2026, 2026. That's 25 years after the 2000 Greenways, 2001 Greenway System Plan identified the urgent importance of good connections to schools. A quarter century, 25 years. Do you think that will be long enough that there will be a safe route to North by then? Is a quarter century going to do it? Out of all the possibilities in the aspirational document, the city has repeatedly identified this one connection as something that is simultaneously important, urgent, and affordable, something we can do right now. Projects have again and again mentioned this, because we can get this done in five years and be done with it. And still, the first step has not been taken, and there's no reason to believe it will be. The situation that made it not get taken last time still exists. Again and again, parks has come to funding bodies, the MPO, to you guys, different bodies, and used your mandate for this connection to ask for money. And they've been given that money, and they have spent it elsewhere, again and again, not just once. We have yet to take the first step towards this connection. I'm trying to get you to understand what a quarter century means. A quarter century has changed me so much. It has robbed me of my youth, I resent that, but, you know, what are we going to do? A quarter century has changed my family, a quarter century has changed you. How old?
That's your time, sir.
Okay. You represent us, and we are mortal. A quarter century without progress. Is that all right with you? Thank you.
Thank you. Our timer on the big screen is not working, so we're making do with the laptop here. Thank you to Ms. Williamson for that. Anybody else in council chambers? Public comment? Is there anybody via Zoom?
No one has their hand raised yet. If anyone would like to make a comment, you can raise your hand using the reactions tab, or the more tab, or send a chat to the meeting host. And I apologize, the timer's not working. I'm setting a timer on my phone, and we're trying to display it up on a computer for you to see.
Thank you. Well, seeing no one else, we will move on to appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any recommendations? Yes, councilmember Daley?
I move to appoint Latonya Wilson to seat C3 for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Commission.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to make that appointment to the Martin Luther King Jr. Birthday Commission. Any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, we thank Ms. Wilson for her service, for her upcoming service. Any others? All right, seeing none, we will move on to legislation for second readings and resolutions.
Uh-oh, I lost my place. There we go. I move Resolution 2024-16 be introduced and read by the clerk by title and synopsis only.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that the clerk read by title and synopsis only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Well, the deputy clerk, please read.
Resolution 2024-16, approving the issuance of refunding bonds of the City of Bloomington Redevelopment District. The synopsis is as follows. This resolution authorizes the issuance of tax increment revenue refunding bonds by the City of Bloomington Redevelopment Commission, and a maximum principal amount of $30 million for the purpose of the refunding of all outstanding City of Bloomington, Indiana Redevelopment District Tax Increment Revenue Bonds of 2015 to achieve net present value debt service savings due to lower interest rates.
I move Resolution 2024-16 be adopted.
Second.
All right, and we have Mr. Larry Allen, city attorney, to tell us about this item.
Good evening. I believe you forgot my walk-up music, but that's okay. City Attorney Larry Allen presenting Resolution 2024-16. This is legislation that would authorize the issuance and the refinance of existing bonds that are given by the Redevelopment Commission. In 2015, as part of the consolidation of various TIF districts in the city, bonds were issued against those TIF districts. The earliest that those bonds could be refunded is February of next year. The interest rate environment is significantly better at this time, and we estimate that we could have a significant savings. I'm joined this evening by Buzz Krone of Krone and Associates, who can explain the finances, Hannah Clendenning of Barnes &amp; Thornburg, who will keep me honest about the law, and then, of course, Controller McClellan, for any specific questions related to the 2015 bonds, or what these bonds might be used for. This is strictly a refunding or a refinancing of these to realize a savings for the city. We do anticipate that that savings will be upwards of over $1 million. However, just as a note, it does not mandate the issuance of bonds. So if for some reason the market turns between now and the end of the year, or something like that, and it looks like we're not going to have a fairly significant savings, then Controller McClellan, along with the advice of Mr. Krone, they will make a determination that that's not worth it for the city, there's not enough of a savings. The savings also accounts for all of the cost of issuance, so sometimes that's a question we get asked about. In this case, the total bond that would be issued is maximum of $30 million. So the savings that we would have over that includes all of the cost of issuance, all the cost of councils that are involved in this transaction as well, so that savings is above that. Just generally, really quickly, the statute requires us to set out the maximum parameters of the bond. So as I mentioned, this is, the maximum issuance is $30 million. The interest rate maximum is 4.25%, and the term for these bonds is 15 years, which would give a payback date of February 1st, 2040. And just to, in terms of a broader approach, in terms of what the Redevelopment Commission is carrying, I think this is in the memo in the packet, of course, but just for kind of the public's benefit, going through that, this would be a bond issuance, as we mentioned, that will refund the 2015 bonds, that would leave outstanding 2017 refunding bonds. So just a little history about the 2017 refunding bonds. Whenever we created the consolidated TIF, the big TIF, there was an outstanding bond from 2011 on the downtown economic development area only. And so that downtown area was not included in that, in the payment of that consolidated TIF bonds in 2015. They had their own. So in 2017, we refunded the prior downtown TIF bonds, and so that's what that outstanding debt is. It was kind of a similar situation where we could realize the savings for an outstanding debt, and so we did that. And then there's also three series from 2019, which were used to pay for parking garages, so both the Fourth Street Garage and the Trades District Garage, that are outstanding by the Redevelopment Commission. We are happy to answer any questions. If Buzz has anything to add, I'm sure he'll happily give you the lowdown on all the details of par value and coupon rates.
Mr. Krone?
Thank you, Larry. For the record, Buzz Krone with OW Krone and Associates. And you really covered most of the bases there. I've got a few more specific things I could add in, because we had some really good questions that came out at the RDC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I might just touch on a few of those points that they talked about. Back in 2015, the total amount of the bonds issued was 41,435,000. Today, the outstanding principal amount is 29,745,000. Again, the call date is February 1st, but we're allowed to actually close within a 90-day window of that, and we can even pre-sell those prior to the 90-day window. We just can't close it until the 90-day window. So we've got quite, by passing these enabling resolutions now, it gives us a lot of flexibility to try to pick the best time to pull the trigger in the market. And again, we've seen the market go up and down since we started this back in January, February. But today's market, we would expect an all-in true interest cost. That's after throwing in all the issuance costs, underwriting fees, everything, of about 3.86%. And that could conceivably generate gross savings of about 1.66 million, and net present value savings of about 1.26 million. So it's down a little bit from where we were in January, but it's up a little bit from where we were in April and May, so the savings. So that gives you some feel for the savings that we're trying to achieve. And again, we'll be working closely with Jessica on that timing issue. RW Baird is the underwriter on this deal, and so they, the one fellow from RW Baird used to be with Hilliard Lions when these original bonds were issued, so he's got a real personal vested interest in this deal as well. So with that, I'd be glad to entertain any questions, and I know Hannah, the guts of the details are really in the RDC resolution. This is, but the council ultimately holds the strings on whether to, you know, authorize this refunding or not. So that's what we're here for, to ask you all tonight.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Krone, Mr. Allen, or our controller? Councilmember Flaherty?
I feel like I was second, but I can, I can jump in.
I was just going to go down the line. I saw all three hands.
Oh, great, thank you. Yeah, thanks so much. I look forward to supporting the financial savings. I do have some questions about kind of the mechanics in the context of a consolidated TIF. And so I'll do my best to kind of tease this out, but bear with me, I might have to have a follow-up conversation. First, what is it called when a TIF district is, like, ended? Like, when you collect, you know, all of the revenues to cover the, what you bonded for?
Sunsetting.
Sunsetting, thank you. That's the word I couldn't find. And so we have a consolidated TIF, which combines a bunch of different TIF districts right now, right? Can you sunset individual portions of that consolidated TIF?
Yes, that's exactly what will happen, and we do have all those figures. They'll be in the official statement that will be circulated probably first of the week, next week. So, yeah, you've got at least 13 different TIF districts, and some of them have portions that will, you know, some of them were expanded at different times, they might have been called the same thing. So I do have that. I didn't bring that with me tonight, but we do have those charts that show, based on what's here right now, what those projected TIF revenues are through their sunset dates. And they will start sunsetting, you know, in the early 2030s. A lot of the, some of your old legacy areas were established when there was no sunset date, but then the legislature back in 2014 put in legislation that every one of them will sunset at some point now, unless you're Indianapolis or Gary. They get special rules. But we've got a real strong TIF program here, and there's new ones that have come in since the consolidated one was started, so it will live on for a while, but that will be one of the key schedules in the official statement, so that we can show the investors what the bond coverage ratios will be with all the, not just the one we're refunding, but also the other three TIF bonds that have a pledge of TIF on those. And the one, the one TIF bond just has a pledge from the old downtown district, so we sort of take that one out first, and then, then use what's remaining in the consolidated TIF area pledge, so it's, and there's parity covenants. We'll have to issue a parity report, which basically establishes the priority of payment. We don't have any junior bonds. That would be like a second lien on your mortgage, the equivalent there, but all of your bonds are on parity, so they all have the same priority of payment.
Any follow-up or two? Should I continue or wait?
Go ahead.
Okay, and this was what might require further conversation, if it's like not suitable to just an easy answer, but I guess I'm struggling to know exactly how it's determined that an individual TIF district is sunset within the consolidated TIF. Like, are you tracking what the, you know, debt issuance was, or the bonding for that district, and tracking the incremental revenue that was collected from that district as independent lines that will eventually cancel each other out, and that's what sunsets it? Or does it get kind of blended in the consolidated TIF?
That's an excellent question. And before 1998, they were all legacy areas, so they had no sunset unless, until the legislature changed the legislation. Then, after, I think it was July 1st of 1998, there was a 30-year term automatically. So any, any area that was established as a TIF area after July 1st '98 had an automatic 30-year term from the date it was created. And then, 10 years later, the legislature changed that rule, because anytime you set up a TIF area, there's a certain window of years before anything gets built, assessed, and collected. So what they did, they shortened the life of the TIF to 25 years, but they didn't start the clock until there was debt obligated against that TIF area. So in some cases, that makes the TIF longer than 30 years, but essentially, once there's debt leveraged against that particular area, that data, that bond closing starts the 25-year clock on the TIF area. So excellent question, and like I say, there's different answers, depending on when the TIF area was established. TIF area was established.
And so that, I think, and then I probably will have follow-up conversation requests, is that, what I'm understanding from you is that the primary driver for sunsetting a particular TIF district is the statutory expiration date?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Councilmember Rallo?
Sure, I got a follow-up. That was a very interesting conversation. I didn't know that there were different sunsetting dates. I wondered about the expiration of the consolidated TIF. Any, any part of, or the longest area of the TIF, I suppose?
Yes, the, well, the last TIF bonds were issued in 2019, so 25 years from that would be, what, 44, 2044? So anything that didn't have a TIF pledge prior to that could potentially last till 2044, but I think most of yours are going to expire before that, probably 2039, 2040. There was, there was a rash of TIF bonds in 2014. Actually, it may have been 2015 also to extend that life of the legacy areas. So, but, but 2040 will be, most of those old legacy areas will fall off and, you know, honor before that. You've got some falling off before that, so. And I have a list of all those, those areas, you know, in our TIF projections for the bond coverage calculations, we've identified when particular areas within the consolidated area will drop off. They don't all drop off at the same time, but, but the auditor keeps track of, you know, when, when those dates were established, when, when, you know, prior to the 2008, after the 2008, you could establish an area, but if you didn't leverage debt against it, that extended the period of time that the clock didn't, you know, the clock doesn't start until you leverage debt against a new area. But does that?
Well, thank you, yeah, that's, that's more than I needed. I had another one question. It was about the time window that we have, so we're giving permission for refinancing, and that, and we have this 90-day window that is, and you've got to pull the trigger within that window, the window extends prior or after February?
Prior to.
Prior to February.
Yeah, and that's when it closes, so we can, we could conceivably pre-sell as long as we don't close prior to November 1st, and then up through February 1st. Now, after February 1st, there'll be a payment on, there'll be a payment due, and then the next payment date would be August 1st of 25. So if, if we don't get good results between now and February 1st, we can just punt and wait until the next six-month semi-annual payment period and...
Okay, then the second question is that, when is another opportunity in the offing?
Yeah, every six months you can call, once, the first call date is February 1, 25, but then we can call those every, you know, every six months, we can re, you know, recall those. And what you have to do, though, is you have to escrow the funds up to the next payment date, and which we would have to do if we closed before February 1, 2025 as well. We would have to put that money in escrow till the payment date. Escrows are earning better rates now than what they were, you know, a few years ago, so it's not as big of an issue to, negative arbitrage is not a big issue right now as it had been for the last 10 or 15 years, so.
Okay, great, thank you for answering those questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ralph, did you also have a question?
No, thank you, but thanks for asking.
Any other questions? Councilmember Stossberg? No? I can go if you want to wait.
I'll just say, it's not really a question as, as much as just kind of a general request for information at a, at a later time. Being rather new to council and new to this whole process, I would be really interested in seeing a map of our TIF districts that included the establishment date and then the sunsetting date. And I'm just kind of a visual person, so I would just love to see that on a map. Thank you.
That map exists?
I'm sure, yes. I'm sure that it does exist somewhere, and if you could just email that sometime in the next week, I would appreciate looking at that. Thanks.
All right, visual learners unite. So I have some questions that I want to just step back and take a 20,000-foot view and just establish a few things. This is a public meeting, and we're dealing with public money here, and I think most people don't know what a TIF is, they don't know what this money comes from, they don't know what it's supposed to be used for. So I'm going to ask those questions. Can somebody explain what a TIF is? So how did we get this money?
I'd be glad to try to address that. And I know we speak in terms of acronyms and take that for granted all the time, but TIF is, is a TLA, a three-letter acronym, but it stands for Tax Increment Financing. Try to put a little humor in there, but, and what, when you establish a TIF district or a Tax Increment Financing district, you're basically freezing the assessed value at that level, and then going forward, any incremental assessed value that occurs within that designated area is captured by the Redevelopment Commission, and then those incremental tax revenues go directly to the Redevelopment Commission instead of just getting lost in the budget and normal budgets of all the overlapping taxing units. It's not really taking any assessed value away from any unit, but it provides a tremendous benefit to the city in that, for that limited period of time, 25 years from the date that you incurred that, you capture excluding school referendum. Those, those go back to the school. RDCs do not capture any school referendum debt, but the RDC would capture all the incremental property taxes generated within that area. Your percentage of the total tax rate is probably maybe 30%, something like that, and it doesn't really give you any new money if it just gets buried in the city's property tax calculation. You're allowed so much of a levy increase by the Department of Local Government Finance every year, and if your tax base stays the same, your tax rate might go up a tick. If your tax rate grew anyway, it might still go down a tick, but it really doesn't give you any new money, where capturing the TIF gives you new money, that you can do projects that you could never otherwise do. And that's why TIF districts are so critical for, you know, develop, you know, finding ways to fund the infrastructure to serve new development, facilitating new development to help that occur. And then, you know, 25 years might sound like a long time, especially for the gentleman with the bike, but in the life of the city, it's, it's a blink of an eye, and the things that you've accomplished with your TIF program have been tremendous over the years with infrastructure that, you know, parking garages, all kinds of public improvements that you would either have to raise your property tax rate to fund those or find some other means of funding it, but it's a tremendous economic development asset for the, for the city. I don't know, did that address that, your question?
Part of it, and then I guess the follow-up question, or the other part of the question is, so these 2015 TIF bonds, what were they issued for, and what has been, what's being done with that money? I don't know if that's a question for Controller McClellan.
I'm going to let Jessica take that. She knows that.
Thanks, Buzz, for your, that great explanation of TIF, and we have used it for infrastructure projects. That bond, that 41 million in the 2015 TIF bond, about 80% of it was used to build Switchyard Park. Just introduce yourself correctly. My apologies, Jessica McClellan, City Controller, and the 20, like I was saying, the 2015 TIF bond, 80% was used to build Switchyard Park. The other projects from that bond that came out of that bond, activating and developing the Trades District, renovating and expanding the Animal Shelter, and part of the large 17th Street project, including the multi-use path. Most of the 17th Street project expenses are labeled multi-use path for this TIF bond. So huge projects. There are other various smaller things in there, like the Allison Jute Box Center, got an ADA renovation. The city purchased the land where Night Moves used to be, which is now going to be affordable housing, that we're a part of that deal, so those are the main uses that it was spent on.
Thank you very much. And if I can ask for information to be sent following this meeting, just like Councilmember Stossberg, I would ask that we get a list of all the outstanding bonds and what their purpose is. Hopefully, that's not too difficult to get. Thank you. Are there other questions from council members? All right, we'll go to the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment on Resolution 2024-16 refunding TIF bonds for Redevelopment Commission bonds? And if you are joining us via Zoom, you can use the raise hand function in Zoom, or you can send a chat message to the meeting host.
No takers on Zoom?
Thank you, interim Attorney Administrator Kulak. We will then come back to the council members for final comments. Are there any comments before we vote? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thank you. Definitely going to, again, request some follow-up conversation, because I'm just trying to get like a deeper understanding around some of the complexity of the consolidated TIF, having a bunch of different districts that overlap, that expand over time, that have different sunset dates. I worry with the consolidation and with some of these types of things that we're probably doing tonight, that things get blended and you don't have a lot of visibility anymore into what's covering what. The theory of TIF is that you are borrowing to make capital investments in order to spur redevelopment that will generate new tax revenue or otherwise spur increases in property value that would increase tax revenue, you know, in the surrounding area. It's, it's, it is an elegant and valuable tool, and I worry, though, that we don't always use it in that way, that we create a TIF, start capturing revenue because growth is happening, and then we say, we're going to spend it on some stuff we're going to find. When you start consolidating and blending things, I worry about that even more, and again, kind of the visibility into it. And so these do all sunset ultimately, but in the meantime, all of that increment is going to the RDC for capital projects and not to the other taxing units. I think Mr. Crone introduced some nuance here that is relevant to, so it's not that simple, though, because of the way the assessed value from the state works and property tax caps work, and running into the circuit breaker stuff that I'm out of my depth in trying to explain right now. But the broader point being, I'd like to better understand the downsides of collecting TIF revenue for as long as possible, formerly in perpetuity, then 30 years, now 25, with a, you know, gap before the start time, because that's not necessarily always justified or needed on the basis of the investment that was made, it sounds like, but is just possible, so we do it. There are benefits to that, some of which were noted, but I think there are potential downsides, too, in terms, especially to the other taxing units, including the city's own general fund, although, of course, we're just a portion of, when you look at all the other taxing units, we're a portion of any chunk of money. So I just wanted to voice those questions and concerns I have that have at least talked to our RDC appointments about and had some initial conversations and doing some thinking about, but again, I am wading quickly out of my depth in this area and definitely need to talk to the experts, I think, to understand more deeply, and this isn't really a suitable forum for that in-depth conversation, but to the extent I'm able to be enlightened and reach better clarity on these issues, I'm happy to report back in this setting as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Other comments? Councilmember Rallo?
Yeah, I just was spurred to say something because I think that Councilmember Flaherty is, made some good observations, and I would just add that when we decided to consolidate the respective TIFs into a single unit, it was for specific purposes in mind that were spoken about by the Controller, but it makes me wonder about whether taxes that were accrued in the various areas have been equally distributed in terms of their investment and whether, you know, certain areas have gone lacking because we've been concentrating on certain capital investments and not others, that, you know, we have competing ones, and it would be nice to have a discussion about that and, and have a visual to think about this in the future. That's all, thanks.
Thank you. Any other final comments? I would just say that I appreciate the questions and the comments of my colleagues. I think that sometimes we get in the weeds with the refunding and the bond issuance and all the ins and outs that we lose, kind of lose sight of the initial purposes for the TIF districts and the opportunity costs that may go along with the TIF district. So I would appreciate hearing back if Councilmember Flaherty finds out more information. I think we're ready to vote. Deputy Clerk Crossley, if you could call the roll on Resolution 2024-16.
Councilmember Rallo?
Yes.
Ralph?
Yes.
Pete Mon Smith?
Yes.
Stossberg?
Yes.
Azari?
Yes.
Daley?
Yes.
And Flaherty?
Yes.
That resolution is adopted by a vote of seven to zero, and thank you, everybody who worked on that and will continue to work on that. We will then go to the next item in our agenda, which is the second period of public comment. So again, this is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. If there's any member of the public who would like to make a comment, you can come to the podium, sign in, state your name, and you'll have up to three minutes. And if you are on Zoom, you can use the raise hand function to indicate that you'd like to comment, or you can send a chat message to the meeting host. Interim Attorney Administrator Kulak, any takers?
There's a chat that was sent. One moment.
I see you're squinting at the screen.
We have a chat from someone named Lee Grundhofer that says, "Speaking of capital investments, I would urge you as Monroe County residents to oppose the supersized jail DLZ the county commissioners and the sheriff have put forth. Jails are not economic development."
Okay, thank you. All right, seeing no additional comment, we will move to matters of the council schedule. Next week, we will have budget hearings Monday through Thursday. On Monday, we will, they will start at 5:30 PM each evening here in council chambers. On Monday, we will have an overview. We will hear from police, fire, and community and family resources. Tuesday, we will hear from economic and sustainable development, parks and recreation, and public works. Wednesday, we will hear from the Bloomington Housing Authority, housing and neighborhood development, planning and transportation engineering, Bloomington Transit, and utilities. And Thursday, we will focus on the elected offices, so the clerk, council, and mayor, and the internal service departments, so legal, IT, human resources. And we will have a budget, a presentation for the CIB, Confession Center Capital Improvement The budget is available on the city's website. Currently, the budget proposal from the mayor's administration, I believe it's at bloomington.in.gov/budget. Looking ahead, on September 11th, we will have another consensus building activity session, and we will continue on the topic that we started last week, which is street homelessness and what the city council can and should do to address this issue or to help and/or to help other agencies and entities that are addressing this issue. So stay tuned for more details on that. I believe that is it for schedule. Please note, I should add for the budget hearings, that those are just the hearings where we, we hear from the mayor's cabinet on their proposals. It is not actual vote or consideration of actual legislation, which will be happening in late September and early October. All right, if there's nothing else, I think we can adjourn. Thank you.